Just couldn't get enough budget talk?
Budget is what the budget is.
Call this meeting in order, please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic from which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in all.
Could the clerk please call roll of the council?
Teddy Bell?
Here.
Chad Coehagen?
Here.
Andrew Hamilton?
Here.
Craig Ray?
Todd Ross?
Here.
We have a quorum tonight, is there a motion to approve the agenda?
So move.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed signify by saying no. That motion carries. Is there a motion to approve the consent agenda?
So move.
Second.
Any discussion? That'll be a roll call vote.
Bell?
Yes.
Coehagen?
Yes.
Hamilton?
Yes.
Ross?
Yes.
That motion passes. Is there anyone here that would like to address the council and the citizens in the booth? See no one, move on to old business. We have the third reading of an ordinance regarding collection of tax increment revenues within the West Echo Edition Urban Renewal Plan. Is there a motion on that ordinance?
So move.
Second.
Any discussion? That'll be a roll call vote.
Bell?
Yes.
Coehagen?
Yes.
Hamilton?
Yes.
Rossen?
Yep.
And then we need a motion for final adoption of that ordinance.
So move.
Second.
Any discussion? That'll be a roll call vote.
Rossen?
Yep.
Hamilton?
Yes.
Bell?
Yes.
Coehagen?
Yes.
Next, we have the second read of an ordinance amending Chapter 69 pertaining to parking regulations. This was adding the, no parking in the fire lane by the school.
So move.
Second.
Any discussion? That'll be a roll call vote.
Coehagen?
Yes.
Rossen?
Yep.
Bell?
Yes.
Hamilton?
Yes.
That motion passes. And do we have a motion to waive third reading of that ordinance?
So move.
Second.
Any discussion? That'll be a roll call vote.
Hamilton?
Yes.
Bell?
Yes.
Coehagen?
Yes.
Rossen? Yep.
And is there a motion for final adoption?
So move.
Second.
Any discussion? A roll call vote.
Coehagen?
Yes.
Bell? Bell?
Yes.
Rossen?
Yep.
Hamilton?
Yes.
That ordinance passes. We'll move on to new business, first we have approve ambulance department volunteers, Sean Even and Heather Gardner.
So move.
Second.
Any discussion? Either of you, two have anything to add?
We're excited to help.
Okay, great. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed signify by saying no. That motion carries. And then Lisa Kramer's here from the Cannon County Economic Development Commission to talk about the Iowa Downtown Assessment Application.
So this is, about a year ago, you guys had done kind of a downtown walk around with Iowa Economic Development Authority, and this is now a Iowa Downtown Assessment Opportunity which goes way into much, much more depth. I've talked with, I've let everybody know about this, all of our communities, and talked more with Chris about it. So, this is something, the cost for this normally is $20,500. They are taking applications, and they will choose five communities within the state where they'll do it for $2,500. This is a, that would be the city's commitment to this, and then also, this goes into depth, more in-depth, like I said, talking about ways to improve your downtown, opportunities that are out there. We've been talking with some people about the Jessup Downtown, there's been some interest there about maybe seeing some things happen. This is just an opportunity for you guys to, I provided you with, that's not the information I handed out, I did send you information on that, it should be in your packets there. It kind of goes into it a little bit and talks about some of the things that they do, or that they would do. It's just one of those opportunities that they sometimes make available, grant, grant opportunity, and I just wanted to provide you that information and answer any questions you might have on it, and if you guys are interested. So the deadline is coming up for the application, so if you guys would like to do it, I would have to know today if you wanted to move forward on it, and we could get that application in.
Does doing the survey or the evaluation give you any bonus points in the grant writing process?
It would be looked at favorably, yes. It shows that you guys are working towards seeing results within your downtown area.
We have kind of discussed, there's a possibility of maybe a catalyst grant for one or more of our buildings downtown, and I think Lisa said they're also planning to bring back the upper story housing.
Possibly, yes, which would be beneficial to all the downtown community buildings within, within the county, so. But there, there are opportunities that are coming up, possibly, hopefully, and this would be one way to help capitalize on it.
I mean, it sounds good in, in theory, I feel like last year's attempt, which was a much smaller attempt, you know, that was like a half a day or a day thing, though I thought the information from them was good, and some of it was easily and cheaply applicable, kind of fell short in this room, kind of just died here. It didn't really take up a running behind it, you know?
That's why, part of this is that you create a steering committee that is responsible for this, as far as making sure that, that what they're looking at is what you, as a community, want them to see, or look at and evaluate for you, and then also to find those things that you may not know. And then the steering committee would be responsible for working with the city to move forward on the different recommendations that are made from this. I mean, this, like I said, this is a application opportu, uh, grant opportunity, they are doing only five within the, within the state, and it becomes more in-depth, and I know you guys want to do some things with your downtown, you'd like to see some things happen, this would be a great opportunity to really focus in on what you need to do, to move it forward.
So the grant funds are meant for the actual assessment?
Yes.
Because where the rubber meets the road is the, the money to do anything that is written up in the assessment.
Yeah, it's...
So there's no funding behind the, the second part?
Well, the second part, then, you have your opportunities to apply for catalyst grants, for, if there are CDBG grant availability, if there's some housing opportunities in the downtown area, there are grant, there are hopefully going to be grants coming forward with that. So, it just puts you in a position that it's a little easier, and hopefully, look at more favorably if you apply for some of those grants. So catalyst grant is available every year to a community. Some of these other grants, the CDBG, like the facade grant, that's available every year, and if they do bring back the upper story, which we think and hope will happen, you know, that's another opportunity for the community to receive funding assistance.
Are those usually, like a match, or?
So, for the catalyst grant, it's a match from the city, and it doesn't necessarily mean you match the full $100,000, the more that you match, the more favorable you're looked at, obviously, but it's an opportunity, so like Fairbank, their match was $75,000. There are other communities that do less than that as well, but it's an opportunity to help revitalize some buildings and bring businesses to town. For the CDBG grants, both of them, it is a one, one to three, so 50% is from the state, 25% is from the city, and 25% is from the building owner. So those are some decent amount of dollars that could come into the community through grants.
You got to know today, huh?
Unfortunately, the deadline's coming up.
I see. If you apply and don't receive the discounted rate, if you're not one of the five?
You're not obligated to do it, no. You could apply again next year, if there's an opportunity, but yeah, it's, you could, if you don't receive it, you could do it at that $20,500, which, but I assume that you would probably want to try to apply again, if that, if you did try for it this year and didn't receive it.
Anything about Jessup specifically make us a good candidate to receive the discounted rate?
I think there's an interest from the state, looking at Jessup, they'd really like to see something happen here, to assist you guys with what you guys want to do. So, I think an application would be looked at favorably, but nobody, you can't guarantee anything, obviously. And, but, and like I said, if you apply and you don't receive that grant, the $2,500 discounted rate, you're not obliged to move forward at the higher rate.
So the, the second part of that, that would be doing the assessment, but if we, if we know we're not going to have funds to do much of anything, then it kind of turns the assessment, kind of a, a waste. So with the budget in the next few years, does that look like something we'd be able to earmark something for, or?
So ways that...
Sorry to put you on the spot. Budgets are tight as nails every year. There's never any extra money in, in the budget, I mean, that just doesn't happen, so...
What different communities have used is usually tax increment financing, and that TIF.
It doesn't necessarily need to be cash.
No, it doesn't necessarily need to be cash, it doesn't, there's a lot of in-kind donations that can be done, too. Places have done, if there's work that needs to be done to, say, the waste, the, the water going into the building, needs to be replaced. You know, you can do in-kind type of things like that, some places do, I know, different places have done parking spots, that's what Independence has done, others have kind of said, if they have a utility, they'll cover utilities for six months or a year for that as an in-kind donation, or anything else that you can come up with that's creative that you can do as an in-kind donation, so, those are opportunities, too.
Depending on the project, we might be able to use like some of that LMI set aside from the tip that we're getting.
Does the assessment just assess, or does it point you in the right direction of, this is where to go look, this is who to talk to, or what to apply for?
So it, yes, and...
I'm not saying that you need help, I think you're awesome at your job.
Oh, no, no. If I, yeah, I certainly don't know everything, that's a fact, but I don't think anybody, so, yes, they would, the assessment really lays things out for you, directions that you could and should go to maybe help with revitalization of, it's not just for revitalization of buildings, obviously, the assessment's more, also looking at revitalization of retail, or other business opportunities, or housing, or, you know, what should you be looking at, where can you find those resources, that type of thing. They're going to obviously focus highly on what Iowa Economic Development Authority can do for you, those grants that we've talked about before, and, so, yeah, they're gonna, they're gonna, the community needs to, that's where the steering committee comes in, they need to be the ones that move forward once they hear and are given information on what are some ways that you can move forward, but they'll work with you along the way as well, too. Say, we're trying to do this, but we're running into this problem, you can go back and talk with them and say, what are some ways around this?
I guess my thought is, is that we're spending $2,500 to find out what potentials out there?
And to kind of give you a blueprint of where, how you can move forward.
Right, yeah, exactly.
Yeah, hopefully open the doors to a lot bigger opportunities.
Yeah, that's, you know...
I'm not so sure I love it at the $20,000 price tag.
No, don't.
Yeah, that's kind of me, too, I mean, I, I, I wouldn't, I wouldn't be opposed to taking a shot at the $2,500. If Coehagen finds the money, we'll help you, Coehagen.
Tylenol?
Our mainstream needs some.
Keeps getting worse.
It doesn't get any better, yeah, you're correct.
What does the application process look like?
It's a relatively simple application, I've already kind of looked at it and kind of put some ideas down for it, I believe I included it in your, I think the entire application is in there. So, what questions they have, need a few pictures, identifying where your top five priorities are, and then providing who will be, who will be part of that steering committee, and that type of thing, and how, and that the city has committed as well. And it would be, also need a letter from the city as well, saying that you want to move forward with this.
It's an excellent thing they do, discounting like that, I wouldn't be opposed at all to trying to be one of the five.
You know, and I understand budgets are tight for everybody, things have not been great coming, but I think it's a great opportunity, I agree with you, I wouldn't want to do it at that $20,500, but definitely if you can get it at $2,500, I think it's going to be worth it for you guys. That just goes to show you the scope of what they're going to do, I mean, so, yeah.
Right. How many people are typically on the steering committee, five, three?
If you could have five to seven on your steering committee, that would probably be good for different, different areas.
Good. And it's downtown only, correct?
This one is downtown, yes.
Just making sure.
And obviously, it's something I'd work with you guys through the whole process as well.
When is the deadline, do you know?
I think it's at the night, yeah.
I think it's February.
February, yeah.
It starts then. It opens at the 12th, looks like May.
No, no, that's not right.
That was two thriving communities.
Yeah, that's what I'm going to talk about next.
Oh, okay.
That's what I'm going to talk about next.
But this deadline is...
February...
I thought it was like February 7th, that's what I was thinking.
Yes, February 7th, that's right.
Okay.
So we'd need to get the application in. And his application...
You got like four days?
Yeah, I, that's why I kind of started it, just in case. Application is something I would take care of and work with, with Chris and whoever would want to work with, with me on it, but I would take care of getting that application in for you guys.
What part of the board's decision calls?
So if the council wants to move forward with it, we would need a motion to submit the application and draft a letter of support.
So move.
Is there a second?
Second.
Go ahead, Chad, go ahead.
Any other discussion? Let's do a roll call vote.
Bell?
Yes.
Rossen?
Yeah.
Coehagen?
Yeah.
Hamilton?
Yes.
Before I go, I understand that you guys have talked about the Iowa thriving communities in the past, and that is the next thing that you'll see, and that application is coming open in another week. They did a, this I wasn't, this was just from today, so I don't have it in there. You guys have talked about doing this, this is a very intense program, but this is for the housing opportunities, and for workforce housing, tax credits, home credits, and for, now they're using the Nelson North Palace grant. So this is where... This one's a lot of work, so this is not faint of heart, this really re, rev, requires a steering committee as well, there's a lot to it, but there's a lot of benefit from it, there's no cost per se to it. The idea behind this is, the state is trying to find ways to identify thriving communities within the state. This would be the third round of it, I believe, and then, the timeline talks about the community webinar, which was today, their application opens on the 10th, the deadline is the 12th, and then there's an in-person finalist pitch in July, so you need to be asked to do that from your application, and then, July 14th, it's announced, and then September 2nd through 4th at the housing conference, that's when they talk about, that's when they highlight you, the communities that receive it, and what they have seen from these is developers that have approached communities that are thriving communities, and I know for a fact Charles City has a project that stemmed from being part of this, a housing project they're doing, so, and I know you guys have been working, already have some, have the Echo Development that has some projects that you're working on for workforce housing, this adds points for that workforce housing, it, it's something that they're pretty much going to be leaning on heavily in the future for workforce housing, for that application process. This is something that, if you guys would like to pursue this, I would obviously assist, but this is once again where you need to have a committee together, need to be working with different areas, working with the businesses and industries, workforce housing opportunities, other housing opportunities within the county. So, this is more, if you guys want to start moving forward with this, this is something I would assist with, with your, your community, if you decide want to move forward with this, as far as getting something organized, and, but it's, like I said, it's something that's a lot of work, and it would need city support, as far as you're going to be able to use, there's no, like I said, there's no cost to it, but you're going to be able to use, if... cost to it, but you're going to be able to use, if you are chosen, you have the ability to use funds, LMI funds, different funds to help move projects forward in your community. Another thing about this, if you apply now and you're chosen, you are eligible to be a thriving community. It would be through the end of 2026. So it's like a one-year program. Some places have received extensions because they have projects moving forward. So you can ask for extensions as well. You guys already have someone that wants to do workforce housing in the community. Get the work, do the workforce housing tax credit. So that would be very beneficial to them in their application process. But it's, it's a, it is a, it is a process. It's not going to be an easy one for the community. So, and then this is something else that is different from, but goes along with. We, Economic Development did a Buchanan County Housing Study. And that's something that I know Work, I know Workforce Development that they need for the, I know Workforce Development, but for the tax credit, housing tax credit. And this is something that's a little bit more, it's a real housing assessment guidelines. This is another opportunity, nothing that you have to decide now or anything like that. But this is an opportunity to do a more in-depth housing assessment for Jessup alone. This too is a grant, but it is, you have to match it to a certain extent. This is a twenty thousand dollar, this is a thirty thousand dollar assessment. Twenty thousand from the state, ten thousand from the community. This is an old application timeline. I'm sure the new timeline will be July of 2025. This will open up, but that's something that they're also talking about. If you want to be a thriving community, this is something they like to see as well. It helps that we had done our Buchanan County Housing Study. But this one drills down. And then this one is where you, you would have your steering committee put together and then move on. So either one, putting the steering committee together for either process would move you forward for thriving communities. So I guess, I would like to know if I can assist you with the thriving communities, if that's something you still want to move forward with. It's something, like I said, it's the state is asking this of a lot of places, but they're only giving out so many. So it's a very highly competitive. And you can also talk with other communities that have done it. I can send you a list of different communities that have done it and see if it's something that you guys want to move forward with. But like I said, it's something that, it's not something that I can move forward with on my own or you guys can move forward with, on your own. You need to see if you have a group within the community that wants to kind of really focus on this. But once again, it's the tax credit. It's for the housing. It's any other housing program that you do within the community. It's going to add points. And sometimes those points make the difference of whether they, you receive that, that grant or that workforce housing tax credit or not. They're getting a little, quite a bit more sticky on that type of thing. So that's why I know those developers, if they see that, they can get those extra points. That's why they're approaching those communities that have it. So no decisions on this tonight, just I want to make you guys aware of it and you can, but it does open up within the next week. So if that's something that you guys want to move forward with, I do. And you want me to assist you or not, you can do it on your own as well, but I'd be happy to assist. I would need to know if you'd like me to help out. I'd like, I'd need to be able to know that and work with you on it.
Thank you, Lisa.
All right, any questions?
We'll follow up with you on these other deal.
Thanks.
Thank you.
We'll move on to the DNR construction permit application for the Cross Spectum Hopkins Street Project. Is there a motion on that application?
So moved.
Any discussion? That'll be a roll call vote.
Bell?
Yes.
Ralston?
Yeah.
Co-Higan?
Yes.
Hamilton?
Yes.
That motion passes. Then we have a quote for fund accounting software. Coley?
Okay, so our software that we use on a daily basis for all of our accounting, payroll, general ledger is kind of going away at the end of 2025. So I have this year to, so the current company that we're with is not on the cloud, it's on our server.
G-Works, right?
G-Works, yeah. And they're going to the cloud. And there's not been very good reviews on the way G-Works' cloud system is working. So.
And they're behind on helping the installation, right?
Yes, yes. So there's been a lot of not good comments on the cities that have moved over to the cloud with G-Works. And so I've been trying to give it as much time as I could for them to fix their new software. And it doesn't seem to be working the best. So I started looking into new companies to switch to completely. We've been with G-Works since the nineties and been great, but it's always been on the server. And so now this new software is not. So I've always been happy with G-Works, but it just doesn't seem to be the best with the new software. So. So I went and got three quotes and I did three demonstrations with three companies. And the first one in your council packet is with the Civic Systems. That's the one that we, me, Megan and Mike have all looked at. And that's the one we would recommend going to. So on, is it page two? It has the, the pricing breakdown. So if you're looking at page two, the second column from the left is the total cost for the first year. And that includes the conversion of it.
From the right.
Excuse me, from the right, yeah. Second column from the right, that includes purchasing license fee.
What page you on, Coley? Tell me what page in the packet here, thirty-one, thirty-two, thirty, what is it?
Thirty-one.
Thirty-one, okay. So the second column from the right includes purchasing the license fee for Civic Systems. That includes the conversion and includes training to get us up to speed on how to use the product. So the first year total is fifty-four thousand dollars. And then after that, then it's hosted in the cloud. And so then we just have support for the, to be hosted in the cloud on a yearly basis. And that's fourteen thousand six forty.
And they can take all of your data and convert and you've verified that?
Yes, absolutely. They take all of my data, they take all of my reports that I use currently. And they convert them into their reports and, and train us on how, you know, to use all the new reports and everything.
And G-Works, I mean, is G-Works is going to charge you fifteen thousand dollars for that, right?
G-Works was eighteen thousand.
Okay.
Yeah.
For the second year or on top of the, I'm thinking, what's the eighteen thousand?
G, that's what we paid G-Works for this year, is eighteen thousand.
Okay.
And they're not very, they're not specific at all in what they're going to charge us next year when we're fully on the cloud for support. It sounds like it'd be more than eighteen thousand.
Right, you already paid your, sorry to interrupt, I just want to make sure, you already paid eighteen thousand for their support for 2025?
Correct.
And wasn't that supposed to include transitioning to the cloud during this year?
Yes.
And they're already telling you that we probably can't even touch you until August if we're lucky, right?
Correct.
So did they then send you another email that said, so we won't bill you again for 2025 because we know we're behind? And we're only going to charge you X dollars? Did they, did they give you that second email?
No, they have not. They won't give you that amount until you sign the contract
Yes.
to move over to the cloud with G-Works.
You have to commit to, I think it's six hundred bucks and you have to commit to them.
Yeah, they won't tell you.
Yeah, they won't, they won't tell you your date, but
Right.
we, we, and they're committing, they're saying they won't charge you for 2026 if you pay the six hundred, or is that not accurate?
No, that's not accurate. They're still going to charge you for 2026.
They just won't charge?
They won't tell you the amount though.
So basically for 2025, you would have paid for just the software and none of the conversion?
Correct. Yeah, because the conversion won't happen until, yeah, August, September, October, November.
This is a statewide problem because a ton of cities have G-Works.
Yes.
Just by way of background.
Yes. So the, the yearly fee after we get converted will be cheaper, my understanding with Civic Systems than would have been with G-Works. If I went to the cloud with them. I'm, I'm pretty sure of that. So like I said, I did a live demonstration with Civic Systems, but with all three of them, and we really liked this one the best. It just, it just seemed to fit everything.
You got the money in your budget to pay for it?
No. I don't have it for any of them.
No.
No.
And nobody does. I don't want you to feel, I, I know you already can tell that from what I'm saying, but nobody, everybody's going, oh my God, are you serious? This is how much this is going to cost?
Yeah.
They're, they're all, everybody's got the same problem.
But this is going to come out of next fiscal year?
Yes, this would be paid in next fiscal year, not before July first. So.
And some of it would be paid out of water and sewer?
Yes, yeah. Yeah, and then the rest out of the general fund.
I don't think they'll have the bugs worked out in the, in the cloud with the, that sure seems like a pretty big problem to not get fixed.
Yeah.
With the current system.
Oh, they keep telling us they're, it's, it's great in the G-Works system, but that's not what all the other clerks are saying, that they've already moved over.
What your payment got you for this year is essentially access to your data on the network for another year.
Correct.
That's, that's.
That's our regular support fees, right?
Yeah, your regular, so for your eighteen thousand dollars, you've got the continued use of the existing system for 2025 only.
Correct, correct. Yeah.
What were you paying before with G-Works? Do you remember?
About fourteen, the last year was.
Okay.
So.
Are the clerks having a better time with this one than the conversion?
Yeah, that's from my understanding, yes. Yeah, this conversion sounds really simple and, and they do a, from what I understand, they do a marvelous job training. Obviously I'm just going by word of mouth, so.
Easy, simple conversion.
Yeah, right.
I think Todd might could do this, but he's not.
With a crayon.
Right. I don't, I, I don't want to obviously do anything because I hate change. So I want to stick, stick with my same software and server, but I can't do that.
You're not the only one.
Yeah, I can't do that. It's, this will be done and gone by the end of 2025. And if, and if I don't do something, we don't have anything. And then I'm really in trouble. So, and yeah, it's January now and I got till the end of the year, but it's going to take till the end of the year to do this conversion, no matter where we go. Because you're, you're in a lineup of other cities that are doing the same thing. So.
So comparing apples, where did the other two come in? I was a little confused with all the, where it said add-ons and this and that.
So the, the second one is called Banyan Data. So yeah, comparing apples to apples, that one is cheaper price-wise, you know? I'm a little, I was scared of that one. Because I'm not going to get any much for training and what am I getting for conversion? I didn't really get a lot there out of the demonstration.
The way I read that, but I thought possibly I was missing something.
Yeah, no, you're not.
Almost half.
Yeah, yeah. I'm really scared of that one in the conversion process. And here it is. Good luck. That was my big concern on that one. So the other one is Tyler Technologies. They are a little more expensive than the Civic Systems ones is. In the apples to apples, they were fifty, fifty-four nine sixty was the first year price. But then the next year, twenty twenty-six, is over twenty thousand, almost twenty-one thousand for a yearly fee versus the Civic is fourteen. Fourteen six forty. So.
So once you get into the second year, is there a, is there a contract for just that year or is there an extended contract?
Yeah, it's a year to year.
It's a year to year.
Yeah.
So once they got you, they kind of got you.
Well, you could switch softwares every year if you wanted to.
Well, but what I'm saying is we don't, I didn't know if they had like a five-year guarantee at that price or three-year or something.
I don't believe so, no. I just got, after the demonstrations of all three of them, it was just like the Civic one was just felt the best, I guess. So. I don't know. I don't want to do anything, but I don't have that choice.
Make a motion, we follow Coley's recommendation.
Second.
Is there any other discussion?
Do we want to discuss going back to just paper ledgers?
Yeah, right.
Consider that at all?
That, that was discussed.
You could probably go for it.
That was discussed, yes.
So we have a motion to go with Coley's recommendation of Civic Systems. That'll be, we'll do a roll call vote.
Bell?
Yes.
Ralston?
Co-Higan?
Yes.
Hamilton?
Yes.
That motion passes.
Thank you, I think. I'll let you know in a year.
We'll move on to the budget. Coley, you want to give us the big, big picture overview?
Yeah, so I believe the first page that I put in your budget is the, yeah, is the initial adoption page from the state of Iowa. And down in the bottom right-hand corner, the total levy, like levy rate that we're at right now is fourteen point four two. That's fourteen dollars and forty-two cents per thousand dollars of assessed value. The current budget you're in right now is fourteen dollars and thirty-six cents. So it's going up, what, seven cents, something like that? So that's close. We're always right in that area. I've received back all the department heads' budgets and obviously the general fund is the one we always do first. And right now my revenues are sixty thousand dollars basically, less than my expenses. So I have an issue there that we need to address. So. The other ones are kind of goofy in the depart, the, in the funds, because I'm doing quite a bit of transfers into funds. And so that makes it look negative, but it's really not. It's cash on hand we're using. And so that's like an expense, but there's no revenue for it. So when you look at like the overall, the negatives, like in the sewer, it's negative two hundred thousand, that's a transfer. The local option sales tax is a negative two hundred, that's a transfer out of there. So it's, that chart is a little deceiving on the big numbers that are in red. But the general fund is not deceiving. That one's negative.
Do you have any recommendations for work changes?
Not really, kinda maybe. I discussed some with the mayor last week. We haven't got back together and discussed them again, so...
Some of the easier things to cut are the money that we put into savings accounts every year, but that's just a short-term fix. We're probably gonna lose tax revenue again next year, so it'll just get worse. I think we need to actually dig into the operating expenses and make cuts there.
Start with the library?
We do have a couple department heads. I don't know if you wanna just give us kinda, if you have any major changes or anything on your end or anything you wanna point out? Yeah, if you would go up to the podium.
We really don't have any major changes coming up. We do have some minimal repair work that we need to do, cosmetic, painting. We've got a lotta scuffs and stuff, but otherwise we do not have anything major in our budget. We raised where we needed to, where we had things that we couldn't anticipate, insurance, we had no clue how much to put in there, so we were over. So we raised our line items where necessary. We did put back in, last year where the budget, where the library levy came out of our repairs and maintenance line item. We do spend approximately eleven thousand dollars out of that line item, and that is for things that we really use. In, in, I'm trying to think what we do, we use towels and, oh goodness, mats and things that we use that we get cleaned on a monthly basis. The towels are something that get used on a regular basis in the community room. So we have a service coming in to get those done for us and the mats, you know, with approximately thirty-seven thousand people through the door last year. Our mats really do take a toll and do need to be cleaned. I don't feel that, you know, they get cleaned enough just as a vacuum. Every so often getting them cleaned is something that's necessary. So that's why there's not, there was a ten thousand dollar addition in, back into that line item where it was zero last year. So our budget does look, our budget, budget has gone up from last year. And really the only other place is that, and we did put back in, as Chris just commented about, putting our stuff into savings. We did put two thousand back into that line item where we had taken five thousand out of last year. Because we, our furnaces and our air conditioners are not the newest, and they probably will need to be replaced in the next five years. And nobody has fifty thousand dollars to come up with to replace an air conditioner or furnace. So we're hoping to try to make sure that we are, you know, planning ahead on that and not gonna get caught with a furnace that doesn't work or an air conditioner. And with our building having two of each, it makes a big difference. So we're just trying to make sure we have money in that account to cover that in case it happens. So that's why we put two thousand back into that line item. So really that's kinda the main things in our budget. Does anybody have any questions regarding our budget or comments?
One thing I will say, with each general fund department, they have a line item for insurance. It's in the general fund. That line item, we really do not, we can't lower that because that line item is a revenue also. So every insurance line item gets added together and the total gets levied as a revenue. So if we lower the expense, then I have to lower the revenue. And you're offsetting each other, and so it doesn't do any good. So each department has an insurance line item that we don't wanna touch, if you're gonna cut, if we're gonna cut somewhere, I guess. Don't cut insurance.
Andy, you have anything to say on your budget?
So typically the fire budget is, I go off of the last two or three years trends, which the budget worksheet helps show that. A lot of the motor vehicle maintenance and repair line items are kind of out of, not out of control, out of my control. Obviously, equipment's gotten newer, more expensive, more in-depth. It's got to the point where we did have the city guys kinda doing some of the oil changes and things on those, but that's kinda putting a lot, a lot of liability back on them guys essentially. So I've got required yearly pump test and pump maintenance, things that have to be done regardless. So I'm already bringing an outside service in that, at the same time, has now been doing some of the service work on uh, some of those technical trucks with the roll, roll forward cabs and things like that, that, uh, I'm just, I'm not going backwards to go back to the city to have them do that work anymore. I just, I don't know, I mean, from Mike's perspective, but we don't, we're not hiring mechanics in the city. Uh, and I don't think that the liability should fall back on them if something, if somebody put too much or too little oil in the truck and, or whatever that was, so... And we're getting another truck here in a few weeks, and it's gonna be the same thing, so now all the trucks are new enough that it's not just a simple oil change on commercial trucks anymore. It's brake adjustments and things like that that, um, none of, none of us are privy to do. And it's just one of those safety things plus just what it costs to do all the service work yearly on those, so... So that's kinda what's increased in a lot of those motor vehicle maintenance line items. Overall, the budget for this year's gone up fourteen thousand one ninety-five as a whole. Inclusive in that, the motor vehicle maintenance side is fifteen-six-twenty-one, twenty, twenty-six hundred of that. Everything else stays the same mostly, obviously not mostly, but pagers, I'm looking to try to get a few extra pagers. We've utilized all of our pagers, we're, we're up a couple people here lately, but, uh, so when I have to send a pager in for a week or two or whatever it takes to get refurbished, I've got nothing else to give the guys. We did get three this year through, we were fortunate enough to get the DNR matching grant again, so that helped. Uh, so there's a couple there, but, uh, so I'm looking to try to acquire three more. That'll give us about five or six extra. That was the thirteen hundred dollars in that line item. Repairs and maintenance on the SCBA side, that's just yearly flow testing on those sixteen harnesses and hydro testing on the bottles. Insurance, fifty-five hundred dollar increase, and I don't even know that that quite covers
That won't be enough.
Yeah.
No.
Otherwise, SCBA replacement, so when we bought the harnesses, we have now for a hundred and forty thousand dollars in twelve years ago, we started this fund and decided to cost share essentially between the city and the townships to put four thousand dollars a year away to help so that there's something. Every fifteen years, the bottles expire and have to be replaced at a thousand dollars a bottle times thirty-two. We're within three years of that, um, so we're looking very heavily on either replacing those altogether or investing the thirty-two thousand and living out another fifteen-year cycle. So I'm just trying to get that number a little closer to reality. Six thousand dollars over fifteen years is still only ninety thousand, so that's fifty percent, just over fifty percent maybe of what it costs to replace those harnesses. So, um, kinda like the vehicle replacement, just trying to make it a little more realistic, so... Otherwise, work comp, that's going up. No pun intended, Coley. I know you're pretty upset about it.
Yeah.
So essentially, that fourteen thousand one ninety-five gets divvied up between you and the four townships. And that cost-sharing agreement shows that the city would be responsible for forty-five percent of that increase, which would be six thousand-ish. And the townships would be the other remaining eight. Questions?
Alright, thanks, Andy. Ambulance?
Uh, we only really had one kinda major change. The rest were the usual, you know, we're running calls, therefore more calls, more wear and tear on ambulances, more fuel, that sort of stuff. Um, and then our PCC billing, the more calls we run, the more percentage we have to pay to PCC. Uh, that's just how they are paid. So obviously, there's some changes there with the number of calls we're running. The only major change is vehicle replacement. We are very far behind when it comes to making sure our ambulances, uh, we have enough money to get a new ambulance when we need it. Right now, we're on a twenty-year cycle for each ambulance. We upped it from twenty thousand to forty-two-five in this proposed budget. That forty-two-five gets us on an eighteen-year rotation in one full cycle. So we currently have a twenty-fourteen ambulance and a twenty-twenty-two ambulance. So then this ambulance in twenty-fourteen will be replaced in twenty-thirty-four. When the twenty-twenty-two ambulance is replaced, it'll be bumped up two years. And then when the next twenty-thirty-four ambulance is replaced, it'll also be bumped up two years. Hopefully that helps us with some trade-in value, because twenty-year-old ambulances are pretty rough. They're, um, twenty, the twenty-fourteen we wanna have now, twenty-fourteen one that we have now, um, just like any twenty-year-old vehicle starts nickel and diamond. That's why the maintenance costs on that vehicle are higher than the other one. So that forty-two-five is really the only major change. When you look at it in the grand total of things, um, the revenue that we bring in from insurance, uh, as of last year was about a hundred and thirty thousand. With this increase, we're still under that hundred and thirty thousand. So this is not any new expense to the taxpayers. It is all still covered by what we bring in, um, each year with our insurance payments back. And it's a, it looks at as a twenty, twenty-seven percent increase, twenty-two and a half percent is just the vehicle replacement. So it's actually like a five percent increase for all the other normal stuff.
Do you have some other equipment you're looking at replacing too?
We're still trying to get some grant funding for the cardiac monitor. It's also getting up there in age and it's kinda nickel and diamond us as well. We do have preventative maintenance, uh, contracts, but again, those are only preventative. If it has a failure, if it keeps nickel and diamond us, um, outside of that preventative, preventative maintenance, it's gonna be cost, costing us quite a bit. Especially to get a new one, it's about forty thousand dollars. So we're working on grants, I think we have, is it ten or fifteen thousand? Ten thousand. Yep. So... We have ten thousand of the forty thousand in grant funding. Um, there's a few other grants we're looking at. Um, we applied for some other ones, we're denied on some other ones, but we're still trying.
How much is that machine?
The cardiac monitor? It's about forty thousand.
About forty thousand, and you got a grant for ten?
Yep. And then obviously, um, we have our association funding that is more than happy to, you know, take some of that cost, but obviously we can get grants for it. You know, that's gonna be our best option.
And that grant is up when?
I believe it's May. Oh, it's, yeah, yeah, it's the end of the year, sorry.
End of the year.
Yeah.
Any other questions for Dan? Alright, thanks, Dan.
Thanks.
Place?
Uh, I don't think I have any ma, anything major. Obviously salaries is always one of our biggest increases. Which is nothing exceptional there. I did up our education and training a little bit. We always seem to have a bit of a shortfall in our line for education and training. But we never know what's gonna happen in that line anyway, so, um, you know, that, something like that is always something I can scale back down. But obviously, you know, education and training is always a good one to have up if you could do it. Maintenance on the twenty-one, twenty-one Tahoe, we upped, um, just because of the, all the costs we've incurred this year on maintenance with that. And that might go kinda hand-in-hand with what, um, Andy was saying about the, uh, extended cost on maintenance and what's been going on with that kinda stuff. But, um, yeah, we had a lot of maintenance. I think we even had more maintenance than what's listed on this one. Uh, so we're probably closer to the twenty-five-hundred mark on that one, I bet. Obviously, the ones I don't have much control over, fuel's pretty consistent. I know it looks kinda funky on here line by line, but it's pretty consistent with last year, I think. Maybe just a little bit of an increase.
Price of gas going down, you notice that?
Sure. Sure it is. Uh, insurance, Coley said I had no control over that. Went down a little bit on legal. Heather doesn't return my calls, so... Just kidding, that's a joke.
Yeah, I know you're kidding.
I don't call her. I think that's pretty much it, unless you see anything that I don't. This equipment, we took down a little bit. And our set site. Which we do have a plan for that. Vehicle replacement, I don't remember what, twenty-seven?
No, you're doing twenty-six.
Twenty-six, okay. After July one, twenty-six is our replacement on that one, so...
So now this budget, the next budget?
Yep.
Do you think your overtime budget is enough if the guy gets called up?
No. I don't care what the plan for that either, fortunately. It's either overtime or scale back. The
Sure.
Amount we're out, out and about on the road with.
Is he, is he paid at all from the city while he's gone?
Yes.
Full wage?
Uh, it's, it's a certain amount of hours per year, or calendar.
Calendar year.
Or calendar year, so... Once that runs out, then we're, then we don't have to pay that anymore, but...
Is it like a normal working number of hours, or you don't wanna break it down to a week or a month?
It's less than, it's less than what, like a normal, like forty-hour a week for a year. I mean, it's only You remember how many hours that was?
For the whole calendar year?
Yeah.
Three hundred?
Uh, okay. I thought it was somewhere around three hundred.
Three hundred for the whole calendar year.
Yeah.
So you'd be able to make some of that up then, out of salary?
Yeah.
For overtime?
Yep.
Yeah.
But most of it would be time and a half, at a time and a half rate, but you're right, we'd have But most of it would be time and a half, at a time and a half rate, but you're right, we'd have...
Well, the time was, you know, the single time was lost money anyway, right? We were gonna pay somebody a single time.
Not lost.
Some cost.
Get something out of it.
Right. Well, I think that'll work out. Close.
Any other questions?
Alright, thanks Josh.
Mike? Look, he's making cuts already.
Which one do you want to start with?
I think building is first in the sheet here.
Okay.
I think building we're looking at... Trying to keep everything exactly the same. Not do any major changes here. Obviously, yeah, wages. We should have done more for training, I think. No, I did keep training the same.
Five hundred, yeah?
Yep. So yeah, not much change there. Didn't try and mess with that one too much. I got a good thing going there, so I'm leaving it alone. As far as streets go, trying to keep it pretty typical with what we did last year, same amounts for maintenance on all the streets, so just full-depth patching, trying to keep that same house as we've done before. Uh, did bump up all the trainings. Obviously, I have one new guy, should have another new guy hopefully here next couple of months or so. So, when you kind of require training for that, that's bumped up. The rest is, uh, just trying to follow trends, keeping with where we were at. Not trying to do anything excessive on any of those. Uh, well, even the streets though, if I was looking at my numbers correctly here, I should be trying to put some more money away for the street sweeper. That's really getting up there in age. I'll try to look at that getting replaced, as well as the gator. Uh, that thing's got a lot of miles on it. It's not that old, but a lot of miles. Everybody's telling me I shouldn't push it, uh, push it too much further than this year. So if we can squeak that out of the budget for next fiscal, I'd like to try and do that, but that's also not absolutely critical that I do that. Any questions on those? Jumping down to parks. I don't think I changed much there either. Just more on some operating supplies, anticipating. Possibly a little more, more, more blades till I get everybody trained up. Do's and don'ts of that. Yeah, everything else is pretty much typical with where we have been. Alright. Down to the water budget. Don't think I changed a whole lot there. I am anticipating some repairs need to be made to well number two. Like to look at the control panels on that system. Maybe update the starter on that. Uh, it's quite old, but it is working for now, so I just want to keep an eye on that. Continue to run it. Should be much more training, I hope, if I did that right. I gotta get, uh, the new guy, all his water training. As well as Brendan. Brendan wants, um, more water training as well, so I'll get him updated on that. One thing I didn't include in here was more money for computers. Most every computer we have actually is the Windows ten. All that goes away and has to be upgraded to Windows eleven by October. And every computer that we have has already been upgraded to eleven, but none of my street ones can handle that update, so I need three different ones down there. Am anticipating possibly some more lab testing. I left the budget the way it is, hoping we can keep that to a minimum of doing what's required, but there may be some additional ones coming. And lastly, the sewer. Also, should be some more in training on that, but I hate to even say it, sewer's gonna be my best guess until we have the plan. We get through a full season, how this thing operates. So we get a good feel for energy usage where we're at, all we need for testing. I mean, we have some ballpark numbers that came from the engineers, other facilities we've looked at, but this will definitely be hitting us this year, where we're at. Yeah, just trying to play with the numbers as much as I can, I know. Cole and I had some early on discussions about, oh, this budget's gonna be tighter than usual, so I tried not to move anything unless I absolutely had to.
We didn't get as much revenue increase from our valuations this year as we probably usually do. So that's part of my, our struggle for the general fund base.
Any other questions for Mike? Any thoughts from the council?
What did the valuations end up going?
You talking the increase?
Yeah.
It's like two percent?
It was like two, I mean, two point zero four.
I wanna say like two point oh four percent.
Okay. The average had been three percent. Over the course of the last five years.
If the council wants, I can visit with Coley and the department heads over the next two weeks and see how close we can get. Unless you'd see something right off the bat that you think should be cut?
Well, the easiest thing and hardest thing, both in the same sentence, is salaries. What are we talking about as far as raises? Two percent, five percent, what are we talking about here?
Just three percent? Is that what?
The union contract is three percent.
And that's what's in the budget? I know we had talked about possibly bumping that up too, but...
Why don't you go ahead and do that? At the end of the day, it's... I've sat through twenty budgets over the years, and it's... I can listen to everybody, every department head give their spiel, and I'm a hundred percent in favor of whatever they say, but you know, now when you gotta cut sixty thousand dollars, I don't know the budget well enough to be able to make that decision.
Possibly more if you... We figure in the accounting software too.
You know, so I, I, what I'm getting at is I just, I would defer to the people that are new to get this worked out. I'll be happy to vote for it, if it makes sense, but as far as my knowledge of this, you guys all told me you can have all the money you need, but I know that's not the way it's supposed to go. But I don't know enough and understand enough of it to be able to...
Okay, I'll try and get together each of the department heads over the next week or two, and then visit with Coley and see what we can get down to.
If we went back to the paper ledgers, what do we look at?
About sixty thousand, wouldn't it be?
You'd only have to hire another person.
Yeah, well, we might be able to hire them cheaper.
So are you, you talking about this fourteen, forty-three? As far as making your budget?
No, that won't change. Because the general fund on that is maxed out. I can't lower that. I can't raise that.
Okay.
That, that won't change.
Gotcha.
So our levy rate probably isn't gonna change. We just gotta
No.
Cut in the general fund to get it balanced.
Gotcha, okay.
Yeah, if you go up to the top of that page, there's an eight dollar and forty-seven cents. Oh, no. Right in that area, right in the middle there. Eight dollars and forty-seven cents? That's maxed out. It can't go any higher. It can go lower, which means you're gonna get less revenue. But it can't go any higher to get more revenue.
So that's why, then the taxable growth here, since that's, that's, if that's a three or a four, then that's a higher max rate. But you'd, you'd be able to max, go higher with your max rate if your valuation is higher?
Yeah, if the valuation is higher.
No, actually, actually just the opposite with the new code section. If the valuation goes up, your levy amount goes down.
Yeah.
The theory is, is that the more growth you have, the more properties you have on the tax roll, therefore you shouldn't be spending more money because you brought more money in with additional properties.
But you get more money in. That's what he's saying.
The theory, that's, yeah.
Yeah, that's what Chad's saying.
Yeah.
Yeah.
But you can't, but your levy, your, the, the formula will actually spit back out to Coley that his levy rate has to go down if your growth number goes up.
Okay.
We will... Is it two or three more years?
Twenty-twenty-nine.
Twenty-twenty-nine. Everybody will be at eight dollars and ten cents there.
You're capped at eight-ten by then.
So the more growth you have, the faster it rolls back.
The higher growth cities are actually less than eight dollars and ten cents right now already. Because they're higher growth and they have big, bigger valuations. So that eight dollars and forty-seven cents on ours is the same exact thing it was last year. So it didn't go down at all because of the growth that we didn't have, because...
And how much does that?
But you're gonna have to find that thirty-seven cents.
And how much does that equate to, the thirty-seven cents?
I don't, I can't tell you that.
You're looking for how much you're gonna have to cut by twenty-twenty-eight in order to make up for that?
Yep.
Which might, which is a number that you probably would want to look at before you approve that. Actually, that's just what I just said in Hudson. You're kind of kicking the can down the road if you don't address the potential that you actually have more cuts coming two to three years from now. I mean, unless, again, the legislature can always change something, but right now, I'd say that, for a betting person, the odds of that changing between now and twenty-twenty-eight are not very high.
I mean, we do have the new housing subdivision, you know, for West Echoes, building more houses into the community that's going into the valuations. So every new house that gets built adds to that valuation.
Sure.
With the three subdivisions, four subdivisions now, so...
But that's not helping our general fund, because that's all TIF for the first ten years.
And that's part of the biggest problem that people are seeing, is that you have to, right? You don't, you're not getting that revenue. That growth is not equaling revenue for a while.
It's a trade-off.
Yeah.
It's a trade-off, yeah.
Because of the folks that have, how would you convince anybody to develop anyway if you couldn't provide that?
Make that trade any day of the week.
Alright. Long-term versus short-term?
Yep.
But it still helps us with our debt service levy. You get more water sewer customers coming in.
So you need a motion? What, what do you?
It's just, just information. We'll just do it in the forum home.
Yeah, this is just discussion.
We do, though, have to approve the fire department budget. We have a twenty-eighty agreement with the townships, so we have to let them know, so... The fire advisory board's already met. They approved it. It goes back to the council. And we approve it, then the townships know what their levy rate's going to be. It's our vehicle replacement. For the fire department, it's a hundred percent cities. That's not part of what we have to approve today.
That would be the only dollar-to-dollar change, is the vehicle replacement, because every if I cut two thousand, it's only saving you one. I mean, because the other half of the party is paying one, so... On my end, so...
You trying to make cuts by cutting up your thumb?
It's working here, I'm aware. I'm sure that's blown up next to you. So we're, we're, has to approve the sixty-seven twelve? You have a budget?
Sixty-seven?
What page you on, Joe?
Am I in the wrong one?
I think you're up too high.
You're, I think you're on the revenue.
I mean, you're more like fifty-four, fifty-five?
Right, right there.
Right, oh, okay. Yeah, it's about the same one.
So the one fifty-five, two oh five? Over on the right-hand side? Um, no, you cannot, up here on the right page, yeah.
Still on the right one?
What page? Where's the page number at here? Yeah, so that's the total general fund budget, which includes the vehicle replacement, the fifty-seven-five. So the townships do not pay anything toward the fifty-seven-five for the, um, vehicle replacement. So this, the township portion is the one fifty-five minus the fifty-seven-five.
Okay.
And then the numbers Andy was including was the, um, employee benefits underneath that also. There's a few, there's like three line items for employee benefits. It's like, I don't know what the total is, over in the right there. Yeah, if you scroll down just a smidgen more, you'll get a total, or maybe it's on the next page. I think it's like eight thousand more.
Okay.
So that is part of the township budget also. So the one fifty-five minus the fifty-seven-five plus that eight thousand-ish number. Can't exactly see what it is.
Nine thousand four fifty.
Nine thousand four fifty, sorry, yeah. That's the township portion. And so of that total, the townships pay forty-five percent and the city pays fifty-five percent. Backwards, sorry. Yeah, other way around, so... So if you cut any of the line items, then we have to lower the revenue that's coming in from the townships also. So that you cut one, you lower the other by that percentage. Same concept, concept of my insurance, that was saying you can't cut. Because it ends up being a revenue on the, on revenue side.
So you need a motion to approve the the fire department? So you need a motion to approve the, the fire department budget?
Yes.
Okay, so moved.
Is there a second? Any, uh, any discussion? That'll be a roll call, though?
Rolfson?
Yes.
Bell?
Yes.
Hamilton? Cohen?
Yes.
That motion passes? Do we need to set the public hearing date for the twenty-twenty-five, twenty-twenty-six proposed property tax levy?
Is this the one that can't be on a normal meeting day, or can't be during a normal meeting?
Yes, it's a special council meeting, and this is the only thing on the agenda, is just a public hearing. And then after that, we hold the regular meeting. Yes, and that would be April seventh, the first meeting in April. When we need to do this. It has to be after March twenty-fifth, I want to say. And so April seventh is our first meeting after that. They changed the rules, they changed the procedures last year, and so this is our second year doing it this way.
Because there's got to be like a two-week notice period or something.
Yeah, county auditor will send out property...
Consultation letter or kind of whatever it was called, yeah, to every property owner in Buchanan County.
School.
Is there a motion to set that public hearing date?
For what day, same day as the meeting then?
April seventh.
At what time?
Seven o'clock. And the regular meeting we could do at seven fifteen.
Yeah.
Is what we did last year.
Same.
Who did what?
Motion.
Okay, sorry.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed signify by saying no. That motion carries. Is there a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
All those in favor signify by saying aye. All those opposed signify by saying no. Adjourned at eight-thirty.